We start with a couple of COVID formalities. So everyone, welcome to the May 17th Plumb and Board of Selectmen meeting pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and also the March 15th order imposing stricts limitations on number of people to gather. We're doing this meeting by Zoom. Information on how to join the video or join by audio is on the town website. This meeting is being recorded and just a reminder that the recording is not to be considered an official public document. So in the operating principles that we approved April 6th of this year, item number 11 notes that at the first Board of Selectmen meeting after the town elections, the forced order of business will be the election of the chair, the vice chair and the clerk for one-year terms by a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen. The clerk will preside over the election of the chair and the newly elected chair will preside over the election of the vice chair and the clerk. And fortuitously enough, the first agenda item on our agenda is reorganization of the board. So I turn it over to Board of Selectmen Clerk John Traynor to preside over the appointment of a new chair.
Okay, thank you. I will do that and then I'll turn it over after we're done to the new chair. I would make a motion that as customary, in this case, John Traynor become the chair for the coming year and would entertain a motion for a second. So knowing that this was coming, I at least would like to just point out a few things. I've been involved in town government for 33 years, 12 on the Finance Committee, eight on the Library Trustee, eight as moderator and five years as selectman. For the last five years, we have rotated the chair every year except one when Mr. Russo declined it. My community involvement is, I'm sure, like you, as I go back as far as being a Cub Scout treasurer. I'm founder of the Library Genealogy Club and a longtime member of the Upland Club where I served as president, vice president, treasurer and director at various times. So I guess my question to Mr. Russo and Mrs. Joy is what exactly has prevented you from seconding my nomination?
I can go first, Mark. John, my concern is open meeting law and even, you know, a, an email reaching out to me requesting support is a violation of open meeting law. And it's just, that makes me nervous. I think you are incredibly qualified and I have no doubt, you know, you're, you've got, always got the best interests of the town at heart, but it's just perception is so important and we always need to be err on the side of caution. So I think that is my concern is, is potential violations of open meeting law.
And if I can comment a little, I guess, I, we, we each have strengths, some weaknesses. We each have different styles and I think actually that has been to some extent the strength that the three of us have been together in four years as of our, our styles have been kind of complementary. We each have our set projects, our pet projects, and I think we've done very well over the past four years working together and really not getting in the way, but generally supporting each other as much as possible on these projects. So really, it's just a matter of style right now. I've, I've looked at this really quite a bit and struggled with it. I am very comfortable that in this point in our evolution, that the best person to chair would be Christine. And actually, having said that, if it's all right, I'd like to at least go ahead and make a motion to...
I'll make the motion for it. I would just say one thing. It seems to be all right when you reach out and talk to me without a quorum, but you take exception when I do. But in any case, I'll make a motion that Christine Joy be named chair for the coming year.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Traynor, yes. The chair takes over.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint John Traynor Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
All right. Roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Traynor?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right. And I'll make a motion that we appoint Mark Russo as the clerk. Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, second from John. Roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Do I have to?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Traynor?
Yes.
And Christine Joy, yes. Okay. All right. So we've now officially reorganized. So let's move on to the operating principles. This is what we had agreed upon in April and we also decided that we were going to be reviewing these every year. So do we have any recommendations to modify the document?
I continue to believe that we should modify it so that it says all open meetings will be recorded and posted.
All right. And that is, I think what we had agreed on last time is what, when possible, that all...
We used to...
What number is this, John?
It's not on there because it was not voted.
Okay.
The way, the way it came up was that we had working meetings that we, basically two to one vote, you elected not to record. I just believe all, all open meetings should honor the spirit of law.
Item number 12 references that. Do you want me to share my screen?
No, I, this, that's exactly what went on, yes.
Okay. Item 12 says, whenever possible and as a courtesy to the public, open session BOS meetings will be recorded and posted. The minutes of the meeting shall remain the official record of the proceeding.
So John, you wanted to change that?
I would like to see all open meetings recorded and posted.
Well, they're already posted and they are recorded by, by us. We're recording all of our Zoom meetings.
No, we're not. No, that's the point. We're not recording all our Zoom meetings. We're not recording the working meetings.
Okay. So that's what you're looking for is the working meetings to be included.
Hey, I, I would, I absolutely agree that, that all regular open meetings should be recorded and, and should be shared. There has been a tradition in the past that working meetings, being a very specialized kind of meeting, wasn't necessarily recorded. And I, and without prolonging this debate, I would like to, a couple of weeks, just to think about this and explore a little more, potentially defining working meetings differently. I'm, I'm not sure, you may well be right, John, and maybe we just say all meetings are recorded, but there was a certain advantage to working meetings that gave us an opportunity to just brainstorm a little in a more informal way. And before we let go of that completely, I'd just like to think through the consequences of it.
The only thing I would add is that COVID changed the rules and the government, the state government came out with rules that said wherever possible, you should try to record and post. I'm paraphrasing, but that was the gist of it, the spirit of it.
And, and I totally agree, though, in the past, there has been language in some towns which has defined working meetings in a slightly different way. And so I, I mean, with your permission, I'd love to just think that through for a couple of weeks and we certainly can take care of this at the next meeting.
Would you be okay with that, John? Putting that on the next agenda?
Sure.
Beautiful. Okay. So that'll be six, seven. Great. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is disposition of town-owned land process, next steps and timeline.
I would like to request that we put this on for the next meeting so that the Town Properties Committee has a chance to go through and evaluate and feedback to the board what their disposition would be.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I know we got from Conservation, we got their recommendations, but we hadn't gotten anything from the Town Properties?
Well, we hadn't seen it. I did forward it on, but we have not had a meeting where we've had the board, Town Properties Committee Board able to take a look at it and...
We also have quite a few people on the line who are more calling in, not so much for individual discussion about pieces of property, but more so to give us an overview of the process and timeline. We have attorney David Capola on the line as well as Colleen Moran and Christine Kelly from the Treasurer's Office. So I don't know if you want to hear from them where they took the time to call in just to kind of educate everybody as to what the process is.
I, I would very much like to, some education. I particularly like to better understand tax title and I would just remind the experts to speak in the language that mere selectman might have a chance of understanding along the way. It's a complex issue. We've kind of stumbled over this a number of times, particularly tax title and the proper process and the top proper timeline. So I very much look forward to some education.
Okay. So let's talk about the process first and then when we're done, maybe we can get an idea from the Town Properties Committee when they will have time to look at this and make a recommendation. Okay. So David, did you want to take the lead on this or Colleen, Christine?
I can certainly start by kind of explaining the process of how towns dispose of town-owned properties that they have acquired through tax foreclosure. And then, you know, I'd be happy to field any questions that anybody has, but I can, I can start by doing that if you'd like.
That sounds great.
Okay. So the most common way in which a town disposes of, meaning sells, town-owned property that they have acquired, that they have acquired through tax foreclosure is through public auction. And that's under Mass General Law's Chapter 60, Section 77B. And the town acquires these properties through foreclosure in one of three ways. Either through a court process where they have foreclosed through a case that has been filed in the Massachusetts Land Court and has obtained a foreclosure judgment, making the town the owner of the property. They foreclosed on the property through a process that you file with the Department of Revenue called the Land of Low Value Process. And they've acquired the property through that process or they've accepted what is called a deed-in-law foreclosure. The property owner is deeding the property over to the town to circumvent the foreclosure process, but it, it, it is tax possession property. So once you have these properties, the town then can, you know, use these properties if they like for their own town purposes or if they have no, if they don't have a need for them, they can subsequently sell them. And the most common way to do that, and probably the simplest way to do that, is through a public, through a public auction. And the first step in that process would be for the Board of Selectmen to appoint what is called a tax possession custodian. And that's a, that's an individual that they appoint to oversee and facilitate the sale of these properties. That's generally the treasurer collector because these properties are being foreclosed under the, the authority of the treasurer. So they have the most knowledge of these, these specific properties, but it really can be any qualified individual. And so once this custodian is appointed, then they work with different town departments to identify which properties they'd like to sell. That oftentimes, if, if the properties are of value, we, we tend to recommend that the town looks into hiring an auctioneer to maximize revenue. And if, but an auctioneer is not essential. You do not need to hire one of the, an auctioneer to have a public auction. And then, once you've identified the properties that you want to move forward with the, the auction, you've appointed a custodian, then the next step is to actually hold the auction where you would, there, there are legal notices that need to be out, go out to the former owners. They also need to be posted at least 14 days prior to the auction being held. And then the auction is, is held at a set date and location. And there's active bidding on the properties and there are identified successful bidders, hopefully at that auction. And then from the auction moving forward, generally there's a closing period of 30 days. The properties are all sold as is with no warranties, not contingent, generally not contingent on any, any sort of conditions. And then within 30 days, hopefully we facilitate a closing and, and the, and the property is conveyed from the town to the high bidders. Just going to another, another avenue of selling town-owned property, you can also sell town-owned property that is tax possession, but also not tax possession. You own a piece of property and you acquired it in a different manner. And that would be through what is called a request for sealed bids. And that is under Mass General Law's Chapter 30B, Section 16. And that, that is a process that is first approved through a town meeting vote to determine the property is surplus and can be sold. And then the next step in that process would be for the Board of Selectmen to, to delegate either the Town Administrator's Office or the Treasurer Collector's Office to, to solicit bids to bid on the property. And those proposals are, that proposal for, for these bids are advertised in the newspaper. They're advertised in Secretary of State's Central Register at least 30 days prior to the opening of those bids. You hopefully have a general pool that solicit, that submits the bids to the town and on a certain date and time, the town opens up the, the bids and, and will pick the proposal that they think is best for selling the property. Now, this, this way of selling property is generally used when towns want to put certain restrictions on property or want the property to go to a qualified bidder. Say you have a piece of property that you want developed. You, you look at qualifications of the buyer, whether they'll be able to, to develop the property, whether they have experience in developing a certain type of property. So that's generally what this process is used for.
I have one or two questions. Do we have to sell property?
Do you have to sell property once you foreclose on it?
Yeah.
No, you don't.
Okay. The second piece is with this property that would be sold as low value, but then by combining with others makes it into something that's valuable. Is there any way we can, since we know it's going to happen, that we can say we want to get a higher price than just go into an auction where it'll probably go for, you know, pennies on the dollar?
Well, I, I guess I don't understand your question. So, so you foreclose on a piece of property through low value?
Yeah.
And it's, it's, it's considered low value when you foreclose on it, but you'd like to combine it with a budding property.
Somebody who would buy it would combine it and then make a house lot out of it?
Right. That's a good question. The whole idea of foreclosing, the actual foreclosure process through a low value is, is to foreclose on property that isn't, is in itself low value, non-buildable. And then I think the idea of the Department of Revenue giving the town authority to foreclose that way is that it generally wouldn't be able to be combined with a buildable lot to, to make it desire, to qualify as buildable lot subsequent to foreclosure.
But afterwards, it, there's nothing to stop a person, say, buying adjoining lots and making it into a house lot?
No, there isn't. No, you're, you're correct.
And there's no way we can say, well, we know that's going to happen. We want a greater value for the piece we would sell?
Well, you can certainly set minimum bids on what you're selling.
Okay. Okay. And... Maybe that's the answer I was looking for.
Yep. And, and through this subsequent sale process, you can, you have the ability, if you don't think a, a high bid is adequate, the custodian has the ability to reject the bid and you would just retain the property and...
Okay. Thank you.
Reassess.
Do we have the ability to put any sort of a restriction on it? So say, you know, a certain parcel, just call it parcel A, is land of low value. We auction it off. Do we have any ability to put a restriction and say, you know, to whoever purchases it, maybe like a deed restriction or something that just says this parcel cannot contribute to buildable square footage in any future like configurations or is that going too far and not really allowed or a general practice?
No, you can do that. Yes. You would be able to do that. You know, it would be a term of the sale and anyone who would be bidding on that property would know that upfront. So that would be, you know, they would know that and consider that when they're bidding on the property.
Okay, thank you.
David, I've got a question for you. Is the, the process the same for regardless of the value of the land? That you went out, the public auction, custodian, all of that, is it the same?
It is the same. Properties, properties that, in one instance, properties that have a fair market value or basically the assessed value of $35,000 or under. Through a town meeting vote, the town can decide to sell the property in whatever manner it, that it sees fit. So they can delegate the Board of Selectmen through a town meeting vote to sell a piece of town-owned property, whether they want to sell it at a public auction or market the property through a private sale, they, they can do that if it's, it has a fair market value of under $35,000.
So thank you so much. This is so helpful. My question concerns the first method, the Board of Selectmen appointing a custodian. In that case, the only decision the Board of Selectmen makes is appointing the custodian. The custodian then decides which properties to sell?
Well, the, generally the, the Board of Selectmen would work with the custodian to decide which properties would be sold at, at public auction. Because once a, once a property becomes town-owned specifically through tax foreclosure, it'd be, it's within the care, custody and control of the board. So if the board decides that it should be sold through a public auction as tax possession property, they would give the, the custodian the authority to sell that property.
So theoretically, we, the Board of Selectmen, would decide which properties we were interested in selling and then essentially appoint a custodian and direct that person to move forward?
Yes, with, with specific properties. Yes.
Yeah. Good. Okay. Thank you.
So David, I've got a follow-up question for you. So the properties that are valued over $35,000, those would have to be the sealed bids? Is that, and we'd have to get town meeting approval?
Yes. So those, those would be, have, have to be sealed bids or if they were acquired through tax foreclosure, they could, you wouldn't need town meeting approval. They could just, they could go to, go to auction. And just a kind of a, an offshoot of the sealed bid process, the, the state has determined if these properties are surplus properties, meaning not acquired through tax foreclosure, you can still sell them at public auction if you follow all of the statutory requirements of Chapter 30B, Section 16. So say you think that public auction is the better avenue to go in selling the property rather than solicitation of, of proposals to buy the properties. You can, the board can, can vote to, to sell the properties at public auction, even if they're not tax possession.
David, who determines the value of the property?
Generally, we use the assessed value, the Board of Assessors.
Great. Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions for David?
Christine?
Yes?
It's Colleen.
Hi, Colleen.
I believe, I believe most of our properties were taken by tax title. They weren't, the only one I am aware of that wasn't tax title is Harry Jason Park. So that would, I believe, David, eliminate the sealed bids?
It, Colleen, you are, you are correct. Only if, if the town wanted to sell it through public auction. If they can still sell tax possession property through a sealed bid process, but, but that would have to go through town meeting.
Okay. And the majority, anything under $35,000 still has to go through land of low value through the state before it can go to auction, correct?
Yes. The town, the town needs to complete the low value foreclosure process before it can sell those properties through a tax...
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Anybody else have a question for David?
Go ahead.
All right. Well, thank you, David, very much for this really helpful information and gives us a, an idea of what we need to do. So it sounds like we need to, to complete the low value foreclosures after we determine what properties we want to sell to even get the ball rolling.
Yes. Yeah. I think that if you're thinking about selling properties and the town has a list and it, the town's records show that they are, that they are town-owned properties, then the next step would be to confirm how they were acquired. And if in fact, the town actually does own the properties. And, and Colleen might, might already know that information, so.
Yeah, I do. I have a lot of properties that do have to go into land of low value that, so that we can go to auction that are in tax title. And I have a number that have already gone through the tax title process that are land of low value that could be auctioned.
Colleen, could you give us that list when you have time?
I believe I gave it to you. The land of low, yeah. I believe I sent it to you, Christine. It's the one I sent with the town-owned property with the values, but I'd be happy to go over that with you. And also the ones that are going into land of low value and the ones that are going into foreclosure before I leave.
Okay. So the ones you sent us with the maps, those are the ones that have already completed the process?
The ones that, I sent you a list of town-owned property after that.
Okay.
And I put the values of the property beside that. So anything below the land of low value price... So anything below the land of low value price um would be the land of low value. Then I have a list of the tax title that you don't have that will be going into uh land of low value that has not been approved by the state yet.
Okay, I think that's what I was referring to.
Yeah, I mean, anytime you want to meet, I can meet with you and go over it.
So just a question on that. I, when does that happen and how long is that process? The process of the state approving land of low value?
Well, once I do my half, it, it has to go to the assessor and the previous assessor took over a year to get her half done. So it depends on the assessor and then it goes to the state. And David, how long does that usually take? Could take up to a year, right?
Yes, yeah, I wish I had a different timeline for that, but they, it, it can drag on for quite some time. Um, and they, they've surprised us with coming back pretty quickly. But um, it, it's generally, it, it generally takes a long time. Uh, I, I would say at least six months to a year.
So the punchline on that is we have several pro- properties that need to go through an extended process that we aren't able to make any decisions on right now.
Yes, but they're not on the list of town-owned properties. They're on the list of the tax title properties.
And we have that.
I don't believe you have the tax title properties, but I can get that to you.
Yeah, very, I'd be very interested in that, please.
Okay. And Mark, if you want to go over any of this, just come in.
Yeah, I may need a refresher. Thank you.
Okay. You, and I am, I have been appointed custodian. Um, perhaps you may want to appoint another custodian where I'm retiring.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Colleen, when's your last day?
Uh, June 3rd.
Yeah, because I would definitely like to go in and uh meet with you to go over this list. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so um should we appoint um Christine at this point? Because our next meeting will be after Colleen has retired.
Uh, I, I think it's a good idea to have a custodian in place. Um, it's not, it's not essential unless you're um gonna have an auction, you know, imminently. But i- it's always a good, good idea. I can certainly draft a vote, a proposed uh vote for the board if you'd like.
Great.
Okay, and then we can just make it effective um the 4th upon Colleen's uh retirement.
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, so do we want to um to do that on the 7th? Do you just want to wait until the 7th to do that and David will have something for us or did you want to try to do something tonight?
I would think it makes sense just to wait till the 7th. Nothing's going to happen between the 4th and the 7th.
Okay. All right, David, could you have some language drafted up for us and then we'll um make the appointment then?
Yes, I will do that.
Beautiful. Okay. All right, so um, does anybody else have any questions for David or anything else? And if not, we can let him go and then maybe talk with um town properties about uh when they're going to have time to take a look at the list. Okay, I think we're all set with you, David. Thank you so much for uh joining us.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Much appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Colleen. Yep.
Okay, so John, when do you think you guys will have a chance to uh take a look at the list and make some recommendations?
So we have already, we have looked at at least some lists of town properties. I'm not sure which exactly those were, but we've done that over the last couple of months. Um, from a general perspective, I think the town properties committee is um, is, is certainly in favor of, of properties to, you know, to sell properties that um, that people have an ability to use, but not such that they are able to take those and combine them to create buildable lots. Um, we don't think that is a wise use of this, of the, of the land. And, you know, better almost just to leave the land as open. Because if it's low value anyways, it's not bringing in very money, very much in funds as it is. And we certainly need, you know, certainly it's good for habitat and everything else to have open space. And, you know, fiscally, you add a, you add a, a home to a property, um, especially if it's a home that, that is a three or four-bedroom house that will be good for a family. Um, you're not going to get your tax revenue back from a school perspective. Given that a child's cost anywhere from between $7,000 to $10,000 per child to educate a year. So that, that, that's generally our perspective, but I think it would make sense for us to go through uh any specific list that, that the board of selectmen would like us to look at. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled for a week from Wednesday. So we can put that on the agenda for that, which should dovetail nicely for our, that to come back to the board of selectmen for the 7th.
Yeah, when I mentioned that uh we hadn't looked at the list, I meant we hadn't looked at the list that the conservation committee had forwarded. So that's what the, most of the committee has not seen.
Right. So that list then narrows, already starts to narrow down and then we can look at anything that's recommended from that point and overlay onto that.
All right, so then um we'll have your recommendations by the 7th and then um may, maybe we can have a full discussion then of the properties? I don't know if, well, actually, that's kind of a busy agenda. Maybe um, what do you think, Liz? Do we have time to take a look at these properties then?
We could, um, maybe discuss them then, but know that we may have to push it until the 21st if we need to.
Okay, all right. So why don't we put it on there just to begin the discussion? But um I think it's probably going to take more than one meeting for us to get this all um squared away on uh a recommendation for disposition for the properties.
Yeah, and I, I won't be at the meeting on the 7th, but to that end, if we've discussed it and John's here, then he's certainly a member of the board can represent.
Okay, all right. And I think Rick, you're on the call too, aren't you? Rick Springer? Okay, I thought, I thought that was Rick's phone number down there. But um, yeah, so I suppose um based on your recommendation, it doesn't sound like you're going to recommend the property, but he's certainly within his um, his rights to come and, and talk to the board and um we can make a decision um based on um every, all the input we received tonight and what we're going to get from town properties committee. So um, okay, so we've got a timeline set up. Sounds like we're um, we're off um, but in a good direction um on this um, this project for us. So, well, thank you, John, very much, and thank you for Christine and Colleen for joining us to discuss this. And uh, we'll, um, looks like we'll have more on the 7th. All right, so anything else on this or can we move on? All right, hearing no questions, um, we'll move on. So Area 58 live meeting coverage discussion. I think, John, you wanted this one on the agenda?
Yes, um, one of the things we've been talking about uh for quite a while now is uh actually being able to stream the board of selectmen meeting live and at the same time capture it with Zoom. Uh, we did try it one test and that didn't work out, but uh Rich is, I sent a note to Rich asking what it would take and he felt comfortable that that was a hiccup. We could go forward. Now, he sent back uh a note saying that we would need to uh get a dedicated IP address to make it happen. We'd also have the fiber, have to have the fiber optics, optic uh line up and fully working so that there's enough bandwidth that we can send the digital stream from the townhouse over to Area 58. So not knowing, or knowing that my technology skills are 20 years outdated, I called Steve Bello, who promptly walked me through it and said, uh, it's not a big deal. You will need probably somebody, a net, a network consultant. But if you had somebody on site who really understood it, you could probably do it in two hours. There's a piece of equipment that would have to be bought, a converter. So I think uh what we should do is proceed with um Area 58 to say, you know, can they provide the consultant or should we as the board of selectmen go out and provide it as the town? I'm guessing if we, if it took five hours or something, it, you know, wouldn't be more than a thousand dollars. So it seems like it's doable, at least to get the proper equipment in place. Just got to make sure that the fiber optics is fully functioning. And uh hopefully over the summer, we could try it and see if it works.
Is this going to require uh us using Area 58 Zoom number?
That uh probably is, but it's a little unclear yet until we sit down and go through the pieces.
It is, I, I mean, I can see the advantage of live. I am very concerned right now of giving up control of the, of, of the Zoom number. If, if we had um uh meetings on short notice or if we got into trouble as far as hosting, um, which has happened in the past, I'd be pretty uncomfortable at the moment if we didn't have full control of using our Zoom account.
No, I, I hear you. It's a valid, um, valid question. I think what we need to do is sit down, go through the pieces and it may make sense that uh we have a separate Zoom uh that is controllable by us, that works with 58. That may be a workaround, but again, I don't, I'm not technology um sufficient to be able to say that without si- sitting down and talking it through.
I, I mean, I, I, I think that's an important piece and I, I'd be much more comfortable with this if, if that piece is in place. I'd be very uncomfortable without that. And I, I think obviously this is going to evolve over the next probably few weeks as we move hopefully to a post-COVID area and maybe back to live.
I think, Mark, my, my headset would be, even if we go back to where we can meet in the conference room, that it would be a step forward for the town if we could stream it to a channel and at the same time capture it on Zoom.
Um, yeah, no, I, I'm comfortable with that. I'd be, I would be thrilled of capturing it on Zoom. People have access that way. I, I, I don't know what, how that's going to go as far as open meeting law and the governor's recommendations, but the best of all possible worlds would be live and, and people having the option of uh tuning in through Zoom or tuning in live or being there in person. I, I hope though all those options might be possible.
Well, why don't we uh go forward and see if it is? I did talk to Charlie uh in Halifax uh to, because I, I was getting a mixed message of whether they do it or not. And it turns out they do not do it through Area 58. They have kind of a klugey way of um doing it by, by sending it to another uh computer in the room where they're recording. And when he talked it through, he admitted that when they tell people they can uh come in and talk to it, they put a kind of a banner that says, "This may not work" in effect. So. But he was interested. He said, "Hey, look, if you, if you people can figure it out and do it, we, we would probably piggyback you. At least we would bring it forward."
Can I, can I give a couple thoughts?
Sure.
So um, you know, the school committee meetings, of course, are ones that are also, have been regularly taped. And we've, of course, had a lot easier job of doing it on Zoom and that's sort of one of the things that, that we found here is that while we don't get to meet in person, there's a lot more we can do. You just press record and you have the meeting. You know, that makes it a lot easier for a lot of the other boards that weren't part of that. As far as the Zoom number, I think um either we do mark your, your suggestion there and that's, and, and, and I think we should, from a school committee perspective, be working with you guys as well as to what the solutions are and figuring it out from a town perspective. But if we're not going to do that, I think there needs to be a set of protocols set up so that we don't have a repeat of what happened for one of our school committee meetings. That means that you need to have, you need to have the number. The number needs to be set up 15, it needs to be live 15 minutes before the meeting. You need to have contact information of whoever is running the meeting from an Area 58 perspective. You know, a whole bunch of procedures that are set and that we all agree to so that we know what to do if something doesn't go right, because even when everyone tries really hard, sometimes they don't, right? And if we have that, then we know who to reach out to at that point in time. And then from a, from a technology perspective, um, I think it's important for us to understand what the technology is needed. Does that, does that converter, for instance, need to be in the large meeting room? Or does it need to be somewhere in the townhouse so that any other meeting room that is being used can be utilized? And, and understand what our limitations are there. And then the other thing I would, I would suggest and, and Liz and I have talked about this once or twice over this amorphous time of 16 months or whatever it is. But we have existing guidance under the open meeting laws to allow remote participation. And I think we should make sure that we have everything in place that we can for that so that even if the governor kind of just goes back to where we were, that we can figure out a way to be able to utilize Zoom, having the right number of, of board members in the room, but still allow that participation. And, and with that, we have to think a little bit about the other technology. Cameras in the room, if we're not, if we're not using Area 58, for instance, right? We need some sort of way to be able to not only be able to see the people that it might be on Zoom, but also for them to see us. And it's going to take a little bit of work to figure this out, but if we figure it out right and we make it and then refine it and make it easy, it's going to be easier to get other boards to be able to do it too.
I, I agree with everything you say, John.
And that, that mechanism's actually in place, as I understand it, a, a simple vote of the board of selectmen that remote participation uh is allowed as long as we allow that for all boards, commissions and committees. Uh, maybe that's going to change as this thing evolves, but that would be very easily done under existing regulations.
And then I think also a primer of what that means.
Yeah.
Yeah, hard, hard card of if you're doing this, you need to have, you know, a simple majority in the room. You need to do this, you need to do that, so that it's very clear for people who need to take advantage of it. Because, you know, I, I have, I have a member of one of my committees who generally works on the night that we have our meeting, but is able to put aside time while they're not in Plimpton to participate. And it's been great during COVID because they can do that. And post-COVID, it's going to get a little more interesting. So I think anything that we can do to, to help facilitate that and make this easier and, and easier for the public to attend. Sometimes it's easier to attend, to put it on while you're cooking dinner and then jump in when you need to jump in, than to come and sit down at the townhouse and wait for that moment that you're going to, the five minutes you're going to talk about that item.
And quite frankly, we, we, we know from the uh, the number of people who are looking at uh the Zoom recordings that we do either on Area 58 or YouTube, that probably less than 25 every time out of, you know, 3,000 people roughly in town. So I, I'm hopeful that the streaming, I think one of the, the reasons I'm hopeful that the streaming can be integrated is that the seniors especially, who are not technically literate, know enough to turn on their TV. You know, that's what they live with and let's see if we can do it. And maybe, John, one, we should just chat about, uh, there must be people in town who are literate in this that we could drag into this discussion.
Yeah, we should do an outreach because I think if we, if we design it right and even if we have to put a little money into equipment to make it work, it, it only benefit, it benefits our participation. You know, if we have people that have jobs that make it difficult for them to make it to every meeting, but they still can if they can have either Wi-Fi or video, then we're going to, it's going to be easier for them to do this job. Very important, I think. And, and, and to some extent expected as we go forward.
Yes.
You know, I mean, people are, are working remote who've never worked remote in their lives and never thought they would. And they expect that now to be part of what they will do going forward.
Your sons could probably help us, John.
No, they didn't seem to be anywhere when I was had to set up the new Wi-Fi system and router. They disappeared, so. They just love to say all sorts of words and yell at Xfinity, so.
Liz, any idea from um any of your counterparts, um, when you think the governor may relax at our meeting constraints?
So interestingly enough, there's really been no discussion whatsoever about that. There are still surprisingly a few town halls that are holding out, are still closed to walk-ins. Um, obviously that's going to come to an end, I'm assuming, um, at least on or about May 29th. But nothing has been said thus far about the meetings. If I had to guess, I would say that the state is probably working on something to kind of dovetail the use of Zoom into the open meeting law or maybe some amendments to that that. into the open meeting law, or maybe some amendments to that that we'll see going forward. I think, like John was saying, a lot of people have grown very accustomed to being able to log in, maybe when they would not have ordinarily been available to physically drive to a meeting location and be available in person. So if I had to venture a guess, I would say that some sort of Zoom, or like electronic aspect to some of these meetings, the remote aspect, I think it'll continue in one way or another. It just might look a little different than what it is right now, and it'll maybe be a hybrid approach, like we're talking about, of an in-person or an electronic option. So I'll let you guys know, though, you know, as soon as I hear something. And, you know, we'll have to go from there. I think it'll be an evolving situation, though.
Thanks, Liz. Great. John, so you said you're not available on the 7th, so maybe we can put this on our 6/21 agenda to talk about Area 58 again when you're available to meet with us. Okay, all right, great. All right. So anything else on Area 58? All right, on to host community agreement, Sweetgrass Farms, 77 Spring Street. Looking for an update. Is that from you, Liz?
Sure. So Mark and I have been in touch with Town Council, and Town Council sent us a draft of what a host community agreement would look like, which I have forwarded to the three of you. I think that the main points that we need to iron out so that we can get a draft back into the project proponent's hands would be the dollar amounts that we're looking for. And it is part of a negotiation. So there's going to be some give and take. They're going to respond back, you know, with what they think makes sense, and we'll have to go from there. So I would expect there to be future discussions about this. So I think the three main points to iron out tonight would be, are we asking for the 3%, you know, right at the outset, with the understanding that over the course of five years from when the agreement gets signed, we would need to be documenting some of those impacts? So that if we were audited, or if they came to us at the end of the five years and wanted to renegotiate that percentage downward, we would want to clearly be able to demonstrate why we warrant that 3% impact fee. So that would be the first item, is to have the board agree on the fee percentage. Then the two other items, there's community benefit funds. And that was the item that Council said, in some places, do a lump sum payment upfront, somewhere along the order of $50,000. Other communities take a more incremental approach, and maybe $10,000 a year. The only thing I would point out about that is that she did allude to the fact that some state officials are looking at new legislation that would potentially make that particular fee go away. So in that case, I think we'd be better off asking for the lump sum upfront. But I do think we need to be prepared for this particular entity to say, hey, wait a minute, like, we're a brand-new startup. So I don't know how feasible that would be for them. It needs to be, you know, a relationship that works for both parties. And then the third item is the charitable contributions. And my understanding of it is that for that, we would identify Plimpton-based charities, 501(c)(3)'s. And I believe that the project proponent actually has the say over which local charities they disburse said funds to, but we would have to go to them with a dollar amount proposal. So that's really the three main things. There were a few other things in the agreement, too, hours of operations, some basic things like that. But I think that'll more or less get filtered out as we negotiate. And just to, for the record, for John and Christine's benefit, we did ask Council about making this the subject of an executive session, but it's not an allowable executive session. So just in case you thought it was a little weird that we're thinking about negotiations in an open session, it's not an allowable executive session. All of this needs to be public discussion.
So I had two or three comments. I think Liz is exactly right on of the issues, really the amounts here. Sweetgrass Enterprises have been really good to work with so far, and they seem like a really nice, earnest bunch. I feel like the 3% surcharge, which is what the vast majority of towns are charging, makes total sense, and doesn't become an overly burdensome thing for a new enterprise. The other two, the community benefit payment, the annual charitable nonprofit contribution. Town Council did give us a range of what other towns were asking for, ranging from very little up to $50,000 or $10,000 annually. I would be very much in favor for a more modest ask. This seems like money well worth receiving in terms of having some money for our projects. You know, $5,000 divided among a few charities in town would be really, really helpful. And again, I think that's a moderate amount. Probably, backing up a step, almost certainly, the legislation that enabled all of this is going to change along the way. There's been a lot of recent discussion, I think at the state level and in the public, of whether these arrangements are appropriate or the way they go. It certainly is what we're offered right now. I think we would jump into this understanding that some of these benefits might go away. And one of the keys also is just a reminder, the 3% surcharge is meant to be for impacts to the town, that is, extra expenses that arise because this facility is here. And almost certainly, we're going to have to be prepared to document what those expenses are along the way. In the host agreement is a big list of what those things might be. So it gives us a good hint, but we're going to have to keep an eye on that along the way. So in summary, the 3%, and maybe asking for $5,000 for the community benefit payment and the charitable payment, seems like a moderate, reasonable thing to ask from Sweetgrass.
John, did you have anything to add?
I'm in favor of the 3%. I would go for the higher amount, the $50,000, and I would go for it upfront. This is a negotiation, so we're going to go back and forth. And I would like to see us make a list of all the 501(c)s in town, such as CASA, the Historical Society, the library. I think the library has a 501(c) now. And then sort of take a look and make sure that we feel comfortable with that. But other than that, I'm fine.
Okay. I had a couple of things that I would suggest. I like the 3% too, Mark, and I'm flexible on the amount that we ask for. Mine was more language in the contract that I thought maybe needed to be cleaned up a little bit. It refers to delinquent taxes, if they're delinquent on their taxes or their water bills. Obviously, we don't have water bills. I would recommend, you know, getting rid of that. And then this talks about quarterly payments. And I just don't know, what's the benefit of quarterly payments versus a one-time payment? It's less work for the treasurer-collector. You know, what's the benefit of getting quarterly payments as opposed to one annual payment?
I wouldn't care, but as an accountant, I would say it's not a big deal either way.
Yeah, I think as long as we got one payment in time to count with free cash, I think that's all that would matter, to be able to be certified for town meeting.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Because then it's less work for the treasurer-collector.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, John.
I did mention this. I go to the Council on Aging every two months and give them an update on what the board is looking at. And one of the questions that was more concerned to them than anything else was, can you see this from any house on Spring Street? And I went down there and stood on the lot, and you can't see any house on Spring Street. So I don't think that's a big issue. So if it comes up, I would say people should feel comfortable from that aspect.
Okay. All right. Another change that I had was, this talks about using Plimpton residents and Plimpton vendors when possible, and then they are to provide us with an annual report. So I just would have them include in their annual report the number of Plimpton vendors and residents employed at the establishment. Because I think it includes residents, but it didn't include the vendors. So it would be nice to know who they're using for Plimpton vendors. And I think that was about it. It was just, oh, I know, I wanted to tighten up the complaints that the impact hearing concerns. I think it said, let's see, "The town further agrees it acknowledges that in the event the town receives complaints with respect to the failure to mitigate conditions at the operations of the establishment, the company shall be required to meet with the board." I'd say within 30 days of notification of the complaint, just to tighten it up, rather than having it so open-ended. And then I had another one where they were, it was tightening up the number of complaints. I think I tightened it up to like five or three within 30 days, because it said if you receive five complaints, that they need to come back to meet with the board. I had three complaints in a 30-day period. But that's really all I had. It was just kind of tightening up a little bit of the language, just so to give us a little bit more control in the event there were any issues that needed to be addressed down the road.
I appreciate your close reading, Christine. Thank you so much. Just back to the community benefit payment, just to reiterate, Town Council said that there was one community that asked for a $50,000 one-time payment. Most others charged between $5,000 or $10,000 annually. I'd be very uncomfortable, particularly as a little tiny town, particularly dealing with kind of a startup organization, a young organization, on asking for nearly as much as $50,000, when that was only one community, and the vast majority are at $5,000 or $10,000.
Well, the $10,000 obviously comes out over five years to $50,000. So it's just incremental. My concern was that if we don't get it upfront and they change the law, we may end up getting $10,000 or $20,000.
I think that's true, and I actually think that's fair. Asking them for 50 grand upfront just with so many other startup costs, I think puts a pretty big impediment in their way. I mean, these guys are going to have to shell out quite a bit of money, you know, not sure that this is going to work out. I'd be very uncomfortable.
It's not a deal breaker for me. I mean, if you want to go to the lower figure, I will say that they know exactly what the finances are going to be. They have had to have scoped this out. Certainly, whoever they're talking to for financial backing, whether it's a banker or an investment firm or whatever, it's probably a knit in the scheme of things. But if you feel comfortable, that's fine.
Thank you.
So, Mark, on that annual charitable contribution, so that would be paid after year one, within 30 days of their annual anniversary? So nothing upfront? Yeah, so it's 30 days from the commencement of operations, they'd have to pay that, whatever we determine, for the charitable contribution? Okay.
It's charitable contribution, and then this community benefit payment. So they're two different ones.
We're talking about community benefit, aren't we?
I think so, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Right, because the other one is the 3%, right?
Right.
The impact.
The three revenue sources. Yeah. And the two.
And then this community benefit payment, which, whatever that amount ends up being, we get to say how we want to spend that. So just for example, if it was $10,000, we could say, okay, you know, we're going to get the $10,000 annually and offset the cost of a new police cruiser every year. The charitable one is different. They get a list of Plimpton-based charities, and they get to pick. We set the amount with them, but say it's five grand. To my understanding, they could say, oh, you know, we have a list of five different, you know, nonprofits in Plimpton, so we're going to do 1,000 to each one. Or I believe that they could say, oh, we're doing 5,000 to this one. We like the sound of that the best. I believe it's their choice.
No, actually, Liz, we have the...
You just muted, Mark.
Sorry, I don't know where that came from. I believe we have the choice on language. And I would ask that the charitable portion be apportioned by us. Actually, that piece excites me. I mean, $1,000 to the Historical Society, or the Garden Club, or the library actually make a real difference. And I really love just the mutuality there, and welcoming them to the community and supporting the community and make them aware. It's a nice piece to this.
The other piece that I was wondering about is if, for the community benefit payment, going back to that one, you can change it. Like, say if you said, year one, we want $15,000, and then year two, we want $10,000, and then for the rest of the duration, we want $5,000 a year, or something like that, so that it was stacked a little more, especially where the state might do away with that, but not like $50,000 right upfront, or anything along those lines. Maybe make it more manageable, but kind of come down incrementally, but be stacked at the front end. I don't know. That's just another.
I mean, this is a negotiation, so it is going to change.
Yeah.
So as far as going back to them, you know, obviously, you're not held to anything because it's not, you know, we're not coming down to like the final piece. But are we, generally speaking, okay with, I'll make those language amendments that Christine suggested. We want to ask for 3%, $5,000 a year for the charitable contributions, and we want to identify those charities that are locally based. And then I think the only unknown is for that community benefit payment, what do we want to go back to them with, like, for this first round of negotiation? I mean, I don't want to scare them away with some crazy number, but at the same time, like John said, it is a negotiation. I don't know that we want to go to them and say, oh, you know, $5,000, and then, you know, they come back with something lower.
Well, typically, you can't go up, right? So it's better to start high.
Basically, the point is like, we'd be better off asking for a little more, the understanding that we're willing to work with them and going to be flexible.
That sounds like a better deal to be.
It's a little bit a matter of style, and John Trainor and I argue about this one all the time. And I'm kind of a believer of going to them and saying, look, we don't want to get into a whole bunch of haggling, and we're giving you really moderate numbers here, and feel like these are the numbers. I think it just maybe skips a step. And I really like the signal that we're trying to be sane with them and helpful to them. So I'd leave it all at 5,000 for each of those categories, and kind of signal them that we'd kind of prefer not haggling too much.
Why don't we ask them for a number first, before we say five?
That's a good idea.
Well, I mean, right, we're negotiating on cable.
No, let's see what they want to do.
You're right.
But will they bother to go to the Area 58 website and...
Right. Yeah, right.
Hey, we got one more viewer.
So let's see what they offer.
Why don't we ask what they have in mind? And why don't we also ask them, as kind of a show of good faith, is it easier for them to make a one-time lump sum payment that will take them through five years, or is that too much to ask of them as a small startup? And would they prefer an annual option?
I like that piece. I think that's another piece of working collaboratively.
Okay.
Great, sounds good.
John, you had an issue.
Yeah, I had two.
Yeah, I had, I had two, two comments. One, you know, when we took in school choice students at the Denet, one of the things we did with that money is we said it's to be put aside, and not to be spent to offset the budget. And by doing that, we ended up with a fund, we ended up with a pool of money, which, some of which we used to help offset the cost of the water treatment system. And then the rest of it is going to the playground. And just something to think about, you know, if we get payments like this from this one or anybody else, maybe we put it aside, and then we're able to do something with it, more than just offsetting a police car, or helping to, you know, helping to buy a, you know, part of a dump truck for road repairs, or whatever it is. And then you have more, it allows, at least as we've seen, that you can have something that's impactful. And you can say, we're using this money for this. And it, and it ends up being something that would normally be a town meeting article to, you know, raise and appropriate, or could be used if it's a, if it's something that ends up being CP, you know, CPA funds, you could combine the two and create something out of that. So I'll just toss that out there. The other question I had is just a really simple one. Is this an enclosed building? So like, and they're using grow lights and everything, but this is an enclosed building.
It's green, greenhouses, in effect.
Is it a greenhouse, or is it, or is it, is it?
I assume it's a combination of both, a administrative building with greenhouses.
Okay, so let me, let me tell you a very brief story. Above my uncle's place in Norland, up on the, up on the hill, or probably mountain from Plimpton standards, they have a bunch of greenhouses, and they grow, they grow tomatoes and all sorts of things year round in them. And at night, the whole area glows. I mean, literally glows. So to that end, I mean, if they're taking advantage of the sun during the day, are they running grow lights at night? And are we taking away all of the benefit that Cisco did with all of their lighting in compliance with our lighting bylaw, in keeping the light down on the ground, if the light's going to be able to go up? So I don't, I don't know specifically what they're looking to do. I know some of the growth facilities are enclosed buildings, and they just use, they use artificial light, because it's, it's easier for them to control it. So I would just toss that out as a-
Yeah, we need to understand that. My understanding was that they were not going to follow what, what others have done when marijuana was first approved, that they're really into the agricultural side. In fact, I thought at one point, they were saying it might even become growing outside. I don't know, but I think you raised an important point.
I mean, if they're, if they're using natural light, or, and or supplementing it to a certain point in time in the day, you know, like in the winter, if they're running the lights till seven to get to simulate, then that's a different thing than if they're running the lights till, when you're trying to look at the night, if people are trying to look at the night sky. Because it will-
I do remember, we had a, this is in Halifax, a rose company grew roses under, under greenhouse, where the train station is now.
Okay.
That was a whole big farm of greenhouses that grew roses era. So, you know, I know. Good question.
We can ask about that. I think we also need to just make sure that they're on the same page with some of our other local boards and departments, as far as permitting and all of that. You know, I don't want to string them along if they have a lot more work to do in the way of future permitting. And at the same time, I also don't want to see us expending a lot of funds on town council reviewing these things, if they still have multiple, you know, boxes to check in this process. So it would be good to get an update from them anyway, just kind of on where they stand. I know that they had reached out to some boards and offices, kind of on a preliminary basis, and, you know, sent plans in, and talked about the project and everything. I just want to get a better handle on which boards and offices, and kind of where that all stands.
And to me, this sounds like a really interesting project, and the perfect place for it. I just think we need to make sure we understand what we're getting into, and make sure that they do too. Because it would be, it would be tough to have gone to all that trouble for the lighting bylaw, and then have that, you know, have something go off, and then we have strained relations and so on. So it's really just to make sure that we're all upfront and understand whatever it was trying to do.
Hey, John, I'm looking at the agreement that we've got, and it says, the company shall use lighting practices to reduce light pollution that minimize the impact on maintaining a dark sky by using best practices for outdoor lighting, such as shielding lights and directing them down, selecting lamps with warmer colors, use less light and only when needed, and shielding any indoor lighting after sunset and before sunrise. So it looks like there is something in here already. They talk about water, best practices. So there's a lot of good information that Copelman and Page included on that front already.
Well, that will spur the discussion.
Yep.
Good.
All right. And John, I liked your suggestion. I might, if we were to tie these, this revenue to like what we do for CPC with recreation conservation, or affordable housing uses, that would be an interesting use of the money that might be more, more helpful in areas where we're looking for extra funding anyway.
You could also help with grants, meaning that the town normally has to put funds up when you're getting a grant, and to have a little up, a small, even though it's a small pool, having some pool of money that you can pull for, and something that you can pull for, not having to wait for town meeting necessarily. You know, if the money is sitting there, and it's, and it's, and it's in an account, and we have a grant that comes up, and we need to put eight grand toward that grant to be able to get it, there's, I think there's a lot of opportunity here, even with a small amount of money, that-
Yeah, it sounds like a revolving account might be the best plan. And then this could be used for our matching portions of grants.
Any number of things, I think. I just hate things that we think might go away to show up in the budget, because then they go away.
I'd just like to make, make sure that the seniors are somehow included in this.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's a great suggestion. Okay, so anything else on Sweetwater? All right. So next, we've got to appoint Barbara Gomez as the administrative accountant. And we had, council had worked up a contract, I think we all got a chance to look at it. Someone want to make a motion to appoint Barbara Gomez, the administrative accountant?
So moved.
Okay, what are the effective dates on this, Liz?
It'll be May 28th through June 30th of 2022.
One more time, May?
May 28th, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Okay, Mark, a friendly amendment with the dates that Liz has specified. Okay, so we have a motion to appoint Barbara Gomez as the administrative accountant, active or effective May 28th, 2021 until June 30th, 2022. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, John, seconds. Let's do roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Traynor?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, all right. So Liz, now on to town administrative updates included COVID-19.
Sure. So COVID numbers are as low as we've seen them in a while. I think it was like less than 1%, the latest numbers. So that's a good sign. As far as general updates, we've reconnected with GATRA, so that is still on the horizon to happen. They haven't had a board meeting in quite some time, or at least not the board meeting that they would need to have to accept us as a member community. But we are in touch with them. I worked with our Council on Aging Director on getting them a list of what sort of transportation we're doing now for people, like number of trips, type of destination, that kind of thing. So they were looking for some general statistics on that. And they did indicate that as soon as they get a board meeting scheduled with, should be at this point, within the next month or two, this will be on the agenda, and they'll get us accepted as a member community. So that's good news, that's still alive and well. We've also been working with Jonathan Eichmann on Soul Homestead, and keeping that project moving forward. This is the lease agreement and the parking area to access the trailhead and all of our town owned land off of Prospect Road. That is still moving forward, and there is a site visit the first week in June, that someone from our assessor's office is going to go out there with the surveyor, just to make sure that gets drawn up the way we want. So that's still moving forward, and hopefully is resolved soon. The engineer from the state reached out to Rob Furlot today, asking about setting up a meeting with some of the department heads concerning that Winnetoxit Bridge project that had so many people concerned. No date has been set for that yet, but I'm assuming that it'll be later this month. So as soon as we have more information on that, we can get it out to the public, we can also get it over to Debbie for the paper. I think really just getting word out about it, because it took so many people by surprise, including all of us. So I think that's something that we want to stay on top of. We may even want to put that onto a meeting agenda, maybe the second meeting in June, just to kind of talk about it. I don't know if we'd be able to get any state people from MassDOT to come or not. They kind of, from what information they provided, it looked like they already have public hearing dates set for, like later this calendar year, and then in 2022. But I just think it would go a long way with, with everybody if, I don't know. I just feel like we need a lot more information about it. I don't think it's the best look that, you know, no one knew about it, including our highway department, and they were just out there. I think that got people kind of concerned, especially where that bridge had some pretty extensive work done to it, not all that long ago, in the grand scheme of things. So it would just be helpful to understand the reasons why, and what we can do to be a partner on the project going forward. So more on that to come. And then Old Colony Planning Council did some really great work for our highway department for traffic counts concerning our speed zones that the board voted on a while back. I believe that they're joining us at our next meeting on June 7th. And I think at that point, we want to talk about some takeaways from it. I know Rob is eager to get some painters out there and start putting some markings down on the roads, maybe getting some better signage, and that kind of thing. So I think our next step is taking the findings that Old Colony got for us, and all of that info, and kind of putting it into something that Rob can, can work with, and basically get out there like boots on the ground, and, and make some of those changes to those areas. And that concludes my update.
Great, thanks, Liz. John, did you have anything you wanted to add from the school perspective?
I would note that we actually, there was new guidance that came out today from the state. So there's some relaxing of certain requirements, particularly with kids out at recess, do not need to wear masks, though parents can certainly ask their kids to still do so, and some additional guidance regarding cleaning surfaces. There has been no change with respect to students or staff for wearing masks in the school buildings at this point.
Right.
And other than that, you know, things, things have been, have been going well since they reopened, since we went full in person on March 22nd. And the kids are, kids are having a good time. So they're all happy to be back fully.
Great, thanks, John. All right. So let's move on to minutes from 5:12:21. Bree sent these out today. They were short minutes from town meeting. Do we have a motion to accept them?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all right. This is a motion to accept the minutes of 5:12:21 as written. Roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Traynor?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, so now we're on to rants and raves. But before we do that, why don't I do dates to remember? So our next meeting is 6/7/21, and we'll be meeting with Old Colony Planning Council then, to talk about safety recommendations. I think we've got a planning board appointment we need to do. And I'm sure Liz has got other things scheduled for us as well. And then we're also meeting on 6/21, which we've got some things on that agenda already as well. So rants and raves, who'd like to go first?
I'm glad to go first. I was incredibly impressed, for a little tiny town, in slightly challenging times, how smooth the town meeting operation was. And I want to rave about the town administrator, the town moderator, the school people, the town clerk, the AV people in Area 58. That was really cool. That was really well put together, smooth as could be. The second half of that is also a rave about town meeting. I was utterly impressed at how serious everyone was, how utterly attentive they were listening to the discussion along the way. It was a little scary, had to be careful. These people were really listening. But overall, pretty impressive for a little tiny town, and very glad to rave about it.
Thanks, Mark. All right, John, what do you have?
I wanted to rave about Barry D. Cristofano in town meeting. I thought he did, he's come into his own, for sure. He runs it as good as anybody's ever run it. And I think it's great. I do hope that next year, that we're back on a normal schedule, because I'd like to see, I would guess there were, what, maybe 70 people there? And it'd be nice to see it go back over to 100, 120. So, well done.
Next year, yeah. I agree. All right, I've got two raves. I'm going to start with my little one first. My little one is for Brian Kling. My, my dog was in a dust up in our yard, and got the snot kicked out of him. And it was how professional Brian was to deal with working through all of the rabies, and all of that. He really was excellent. And it made me feel much better after talking to him, and not having to quarantine, and all of that good stuff. And then my second rave is, there was a house fire on my street last night. And after we learned that there was no one in the house, and someone came home, one of the residents got home early in the fire, and was able to get their dog out, that, and then you could breathe, and, and just watch the amazing job that the Plimpton Fire and EMS did. The Plimpton Police, Halifax Fire and EMS were there, Kingston Fire and EMS, Carver and Plymouth. And what amazing effort they did to try to put this, this pretty extensive fire out. And it was really amazing and impressive to watch them work. They just were, it was just, it was really remarkable. And hats off to Chief Silva, and everyone who showed up and really contained that fire that was pretty out of control when, when they arrived. So it was a job well done. All right, so that's, that's all we've got tonight. So we'll be meeting again in two weeks. Happy Memorial Day to everyone. Hope you enjoy your, your long weekend, and, and we'll see you soon. All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, second. All right, all in favor. Good night. Good night, everyone.